It is four o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with the roll call.
Mayor Sue Patterson.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Warren Dickert.
Present.
Councillor Harold Fleet.
Present.
Councillor Dave Hawking.
Present.
Councillor Carol Hudson.
Present.
Councillor Brandon Cable.
Present.
Councillor Susan Sackel.
Present.
Thank you. All members are accounted for. I'll begin with the land acknowledgement. As we work toward reconciliation with Indigenous people, we begin our meeting today by respectfully acknowledging that we are situated on the traditional territory of the Anishinaabe Nation, the people of three fires known as Ojibwe, Oda'wah, and Potawatomi nations, and further give thanks to the Chipewas of Sogin and the Chipewas of Nauvoo, now known as the Sogin-Ojibwe Nation, as the traditional keepers of this land. So, welcome to our Committee of the Whole meeting for Monday, June the 2nd, 2025. Good afternoon, council, staff, guests, the viewing public, and the media. Council, does anyone have a disclosure of pecuniary interest or a conflict of interest? Seeing none, if one should arise during the meeting, you may declare it then. We do not have any additions or deletions, but I do want to share a message that we recognise that the entire region of Gray Bruce is united in sorrow over the heartbreaking loss of four young students and their coach in a tragic accident, as well as the loss of a young man in a workplace accident. Their love of sports, the game, their teams, family, and fatherhood reflect the very spirit of our community, one of passion, commitment, and connection. To the families and friends and all those touched by these losses, we stand with you. Your pain is shared by our whole community, and we honour the memories of those taken far too soon. Next on our agenda is our health and safety message, and this message demonstrates the town's commitment to safety, to staff, and our residents. It is intended to raise awareness of potential risks, promote safe practices, and help prevent injuries, illnesses, and fatalities. So, item 5.1 is our message, and Deputy Mayor Dickert is going to share the message with us. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, your worship. This month is Safety Tips for Seniors, and it also is recognising the 30th anniversary of Seniors Month in Ontario. Falls or slips getting in and out of the bath or shower is a common problem. Consider adding grab bars near showers and tub units and the toilet to prevent accidents or injuries. Consider placing nightlights in hallways leading to bathrooms to reduce risk of fall or injury. Have a phone or emergency alert system next to the bed. It should be quick and easy to alert a family member or emergency personnel. Clearly label dangerous, flammable materials or products, and place them in a locked storage area if the senior wouldn't be able to easily recognise a label. Keep a schedule of food in the fridge and expiry dates to avoid food from spoiling and a senior becoming ill. A quick and easy schedule can be placed with a magnet on the fridge to remind a caregiver or the senior themselves when to buy new milk or eggs. Check to ensure that emergency equipment is up to date and working, such as fire extinguishers or fire alarms. Fire alarm batteries should be replaced once a year. Check that walkers and canes are at the right height and that the rubber tips are not worn. This can cause slips and falls, but also can cause back pain and unnecessary aches if the height is wrong. Update escape plans with seniors and keep their current capabilities in mind and practise with them.
Thank you. All good information. Item 6, we do not have any delegations. Item 7, we do not have any business arising from the minutes. So, we'll move right into staff reports. The first one, 8.1, is Report DCS 0825. The subject is external borrowing, and it's from Chris Walker, our Director of Corporate Services and Treasurer. And I need a mover and seconder to put this on the floor before Chris highlights the report. Councillor Hudson and Deputy Mayor Dickert. Chris?
Thank you, your worship. Council may remember during our finance meeting back in February, we had talked about the current status of all our internal and external borrowing. And it was noted that the Trails Bridge last year was internally borrowed from our wastewater reserve funds. And our existing landfill sale number two borrowing back in 2013 was close to $934,000, and there's about $508,000 still left in there, and that's from the Water Reserve Fund. So currently, we repay these to the tune of about $208,000. And that's the combination of the P&amp;H Centre, which will be done on August. So it took us 15 years to clear that P&amp;H Centre. Just so you know, that, just going back in time, it was just under $10.7 million that was spent on the P&amp;H Centre, of which we received $6.9 million from the province and feds, and the rest of it was from the town, so just under 3.8. And we had fundraised about 1.8, so about $2 million that we had spent, and got it paid off in 15 years. So that's a testament to the community and their hard work and their fundraising efforts. So, that amount, we had taken into account when we were going for the loan repayment for the trail bridges, so that we would have no additional money being spent in our taxes. So we were basically taking $163,000 to $165,000 and using that towards the future Trails Bridge as well. So that's where we came up with the $208,000 between the new trail loan and the landfill expansion loan. Now, I also gave you a copy of what we had talked about back in February, and that's that colourful-looking one with lots of colours on it for you to see how much we're borrowing internally and externally. And during that meeting, we were directed as staff to investigate internal borrowing opportunities to cover the amounts owing for this trail bridge and the landfill, so that we could have our water and wastewater reserve funds replenished back to where they need, because as we know, we have future projects. It says Seventh Street Water Tower. It's actually Seventh Ave. Thank you, Mayor Patterson, for noticing that. Seventh Ave Water Tower, which is underway right now, and the wastewater treatment plant upgrade. So we really need to have that money back in those reserve funds for other applicable purposes. So, staff put out a request for quotations to all our local financial institutions, closed on May 22nd, and we had sent it out to six, and only three replied back. And we asked for a five-year and a 10-year term, as well as having a 10-year amortisation for both of those, between amounts of $500,000 in case we were just doing the landfill, and up to $1.5 million in case we were doing both the Trails and the landfill together. So, the attachment, first table there in green, shows you that we received from the TD Bank, Meridian Credit Union, CIBC, their rates for a five-year term, ranging from 4.14% up to 4.493%, and the amounts that would be paid annually, ranging from $183,441 all the way up to $186,488. Keep in mind, this is a five-year term, which means in five more years, we have to go back out again and look for another rate for another further five years. So the balance at the end ranges from $825,000 up to $833,000. That's based on $1.5 million. The next table, highlighted in blue there, shows what it would be on a 10-year, direct 10-year rate, 10-year amortisation, ranging from 4.44% all the way up to 5.09%. Keep in mind, at the end of the 10-year term, there's no renewals. Everything's paid off in 2035. Right now, the current prime interest rate at the time I was writing this was 4.75%, and the town receives prime less 1.55%, so we usually get about 3.2% on our banking at this point in time. The higher the interest prime rate, the higher the rate on our investments. So, as you can see, no matter which term we use, five-year, 10-year, whichever bank we choose, the annual amount is still under $208,000 that we are currently putting in the budget. So there would be some savings there. So I've given you five different options. I'll go through them rather quickly for you. So option one is basically you borrow the $1.5 million for five years on a 10-year amortisation. It would be $183,441 a year. Keep in mind, at the end of the term, you have about $825,000 that has to be renewed. The pros are it's a five-year term with a 10-year amortisation period. The water and wastewater reserve funds are fully replenished to where they need to be, and there could be a possible lower interest rate in five years. The cons is that you have to renew in five years, and possibly the interest rates could be higher. Just so you know, when we borrowed for a 10-year straight for the P&amp;H, it was at 2.52%. So you can see how rates have gone up. So option two, we basically borrow $1.5 million over 10 years, guaranteed for 10 years. It's $186,000 a year, again, savings of about $21,000, $22,000. Pros, it's guaranteed for 10-year, and all loans are completed by 2035, and the water and wastewater reserve funds are available for immediate future use. The cons is that we could possibly have in five years a lower interest rate if we locked in now. Option three is just borrowing once, and that's $1 million just for the Trails portion, and that we continue on with the internal portion through the wastewater or for the water reserve funds, which means we have a guaranteed eight-year rate. We can pay off the Trails in 2033. However, the landfill would continue using the water reserve funds and would still be payable in 2037, so another 12 years yet to go on that. Option four is that we borrow externally for the Trails project from Infrastructure Ontario. They have a lower interest rate of 4%, but you can only borrow for the Trails portion only, and then we have to continue internally borrowing for the landfill. Again, only the wastewater reserve fund becomes clear. Wastewater, the water reserve fund still would be paying till 2037 on that one. Pros, that we have a 10-year guaranteed rate, and the Trails loan is completed in 2035, so 10 years. Lower interest rate than the external financial institutions, and only the wastewater reserve fund is available for immediate use. The con is that we continue to borrow internally. We have 12 years additional payments internally, and there is no availability to prepay the Infrastructure Ontario loan. It's locked in for the entire term. Option five is that we borrow again, just from Ontario Infrastructure, for a 10-year period at 4%, and we also borrow externally for a 10-year period from TD for the $500,000. So you're basically having two separate loans, two different lenders, one being Infrastructure Ontario and one being the TD Bank. Both loans will be done in 2035. Both the water and wastewater reserve funds are available right now. Everything's paid off in 2035. The con, the only con to that is it's two separate external loans, and there is no availability to prepay any infrastructure loan. And borrowing from Infrastructure Ontario is not an option for our landfill because it's well over two years, and you can only borrow from Infrastructure Ontario if your project is within the two-year threshold of it being completed. So, options number one, number two, and number three, clear the external loan earlier than the end of the term agreed upon. And it also allows up to 10% of the original amount of the fixed-term loan amount to be prepaid if you wish to pay it off. And any borrowing for Infrastructure Ontario in option four or five is locked in, so you cannot pay that off earlier. Keep in mind that with the ever-increasing strain on our budgets, the chances of having lots of money left over to try and prepay 10% is probably very small, if not zero at all. So I don't think that's going to be a real factor in what we're looking at. What we want to see is a guaranteed rate that we're guaranteed to be paying this amount for so many years, and everything's how we want it to be for budgeting purposes. So, the other option is at the end of the year, we also have our Policy Finance 024, which is our operating surplus deficit management policy, which does not allocate any monies to be prepaid for external loans, only our internal loans. Does it allow 10% to come off there? That's what our policy states. So, any of these options are fine with us. However, we've decided that the best one for the town itself right now is either option two or option five. Option two and option five both get you to clear all the reserve funds. Everything is paid. The difference between the two is two separate loans for option five versus one loan for option two. And this allows both of the loans to be combined as one loan on option two. Where option five, you have to have two separate loans. Our budget includes almost $95,000 for the Trails to commence in September and the landfill annually, which is sufficient to cover the amount that we required if we started this loan in July 1st. Future budgets would be about $186,000 a year, which is approximately $21,900 lower than the current budget that we set aside for $208,000. And as previously noticed, the Trails borrowing will be offset by reallocating the amount that was used towards the P&amp;H Centre. So again, no change in the amount being used from taxes. As the opening balances for both of these loans exceed the $1.5 million max that we want to borrow, there would be some monies that need to be cleared out in the meantime. So, we would need $32,500 to be cleared in 2025 through our general reserves, so that we could go with the maximum of 1.5 to borrow externally if that option one or two scenarios are the direction. If it's option three would be the direction, amount of only $24,000 would be required. However, if we do option five, the direction, we would only need $8,400. Again, it looks at what we need to borrow $1,024,000 for Trails versus $508,000 for our landfill. So you put those together, that's where you get the $32,000. It's over the $1.5 million. So as I've mentioned before, there's really no right way, which option you want. It depends if you want a guaranteed rate for 10 years. We, as staff, look at, we want to have consistent budgets for the next 10 years, so this is the amount that we want to borrow. Option five, there's a little bit more paperwork, and we have to wait for Infrastructure Ontario, and those rates change every single day. So I can't lock in a rate until we're ready to do a bylaw. You will have to pass two separate bylaws for option five. Option two, you pass one bylaw, and you get the rate within the next day or so. And I also had a request to remind council about our new police station that we will be budgeting for. You may remember, we talked about a three-year phasing. So in 2025, we had set aside $125,600 for our tax dollars. And then in 2026, we're going to add another $262,200 to our 26 tax amount. And then in 2027, another further $262,200, so that we get to that $650,000 that is required to borrow on $8 million. Keep in mind, it looks pretty good that we may be a little over than $8 million by the time we pay over this stuff for the last year or so. Might only be about $7.5 that we have to borrow out of the full eight-and-a-half million that we're talking about for the police station, or 8.8. So it may be a little lower than $650,000, but it's still that amount that we have put aside for that. And then you will remember that Fire Hall last, in 2025, was the last year that we added to that. So we're spending almost $420,000 a year just on the Fire Hall, starting this year, once the FCM is ready to go. And that doesn't look like we're ready to get any funding from them till almost September. So, been a whole year. It's a lot of paperwork to get to them, and they don't like to pass anything off early, and they want 60 days' notice prior to anything getting back to us for that. So, in the future, what we're going to have externally is possibly this $1.5 million that we're looking at right now for the Trails and landfill. We would have the Fire Hall, which is about almost $5.4, $5.5 million, depending on what FCM allows. And then the police station, we had budgeted for $8 million to be in there. And you also have in the future a fire truck that's going to be there in 2027, that you're looking at another $470,000. So you're going to be around the $15.5 million borrowed, if everything is at the max that I've just told you about. Internally, you will have the loader, but that will not affect your tax dollars whatsoever. You remember, we keep monies aside every year we put for the loader, so we're looking at taking some of that money for the next couple of years to replenish what was borrowed, so it won't hit the bottom line of your taxes. The theatre will be paid off in 2032. You also want to borrow for the splash pad this year, so that's another $420,000 that will be added internally. So that'll be done in 2033. And the pumper truck that we currently have, we spend about $28,000 a year, will be done in 2034. So you've got a lot of them that will be done by about 2035. You'll have a lot done. And the ones that will be left will be your Fire Hall in 2045 and your Police Station in 2047. We're looking at 20 years on those. So hopefully, that kind of gives you an idea where we're at right now. So, the recommendation is that this Report DCS 08-25, External Borrowing, be received by council, and that council agrees to option number two as detailed in this report and/or provide direction on other external borrowing options.
Thanks, Chris. Open for discussion. Councillor Hawking, then Deputy Mayor Dickert.
Thank you, your worship. Chris, I'd just like to know the method that we paid off the P&amp;H Centre. Was it similar to one of these five options that you just described?
Three-year, worship. The first year, first time we did it, we were looking at a 20-year. So we did a five-year term for a 20-year amortisation. And then when it came up for renewal, we had better rates, so we were able to lock in for a 10-year, so that we were done in 15 years versus adding, doing another five-year term, and then coming back in another five years to do another five years and another five years.
Thank you. Secondly, I don't know the term, but sometimes we float around this index number that the government says, "Oops, you're getting in trouble because you're spending too much." And where are we with that number? And can you tell me what that's referred to?
The annual payment limit, annual repayment limit. And we could repay back over $4,500,000 around there. I'd have to look at what the actual ERL was, but we're not even close to that. Right now, we're only paying $165,000. They don't look at our internal borrowing at all. They look at just external borrowing for that. So we will be fine. We could borrow up to $40 to $45 million, depending if it's 5% or 7% is what they had showed us. And when we borrow all this, we'll be at $15 million. You may remember when we were talking about water and wastewater, that we do have about $45 million coming up, so we're going to be needing a lot of grants to kind of keep us in that zone.
But that's good news, because you're saying to us, we're in good financial shape. You said $150,000, and the limit is $4 million, so it's quite significant.
Correct, but we're going to be going out this year. So when we come back, it'll be up to, well, we've got the $1.5 million, so we'll have $186,000 on that, plus possibly $186 or $183, whichever council decides on. And then we'll also have the $420,000 for the FCM funding. So we're going to be up around half a million, but we still have $3.5 to $4 million a year. But you wouldn't want to be spending that kind of money on loans.
My apology. It's reassuring to know that we're in good financial shape with the pending capital expenditures that are coming down the line. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Dickert?
Thank you, worship, and thank you, Chris, for all those numbers and details. The prepayment option, you said it was 10%. Is that annually or 10% for the entire length of the loan?
It says 10% on an annual basis. You can pay that off. But like I said, we have other options for using that money, so I don't see that happening too often, but it's just an in case we want it to.
I actually support the staff recommendation of option two. You know, it frees up the money that we have, that we need for our water tower and for the treatment plant. It gives us a stable payment schedule for the next 10 years. The 4.4% seems reasonable, and you know, it may be up and down a little bit over those 10 years, but I think in the long run, I think 4.4% is a good place to be. So I do support option two. Thanks.
Okay, I have councillor Cable online, then councillor Fleet.
Thank you, worship, and thank you, Chris, for the report. I would support option number five. I think looking at even the difference between 4.44% and 4% on a million dollars. It was a few thousand dollars each year, so I get that's a little bit more paperwork, but to me, it would make sense to go with a lower rate on the Trail Bridge project and then to seek another loan to pay off the landfill.
Thank you, councillor Cable. Councillor Fleet?
Thank you, worship, and thanks, Chris, for that report. I also support option two. I think it's the lowest current rate, 4.4%. We don't know where rates are going to go. It would be cleared up hopefully in 10 years, 2035. You know, we can pay that 10% off. It's all in one financial institution, I guess, and I think it'd be easier to manage, so I'll support option two.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councillor Sackel?
Thank you, your worship. Chris, thanks for all those options. I really appreciate the work that you've done and looking at the external borrowing as well. And I too want to support the staff with option number two.
Any other discussion? Okay, so I think we can call the vote. The recommendation was to support option two or provide other directions, so we'll start with option two. And I'll ask for a show of hands, all in favour of option two. One, two, three, four, five. Myself is six. And councillor Cable, you're opposed to that?
That is correct.
Thank you. The motion is carried for option two. The next item on the agenda is 8.2. We're on page 11 of the package. This is Report DCS 0925. The subject is the 2025 final blended tax rates. It's from Chris Walker, our Director of Corporate Services and Treasurer. And I need a mover and seconder to put this on the floor. Councillor Sackel and councillor Fleet. Chris, all yours.
Thank you, your worship. Council may remember, oh, five, six months ago, we passed the budget in December 2024 for 2025, and our levy was to increase $698,600, or 7.7% over the last year's levy. So we're at $9,801,000. And it's broken down, as you can see in that little chart, $379,400 is accountable to Police Services, so over 4.2% of our 7.7% increase is for Police. The other $79,400 is for Library and Other Boards, such as Sogin Mobility, Sogin Municipal Airport, and Sogin Valley Conservation Authority. Lots of Sogins in there. And that was 0.87%, and then the remainder was from the Towns portion of the $239,800. And most of that was because of our directions to increase, so the borrowing for the Fire Hall, the start of the Police Station, our 1.38% that we had talked about, as well as the Splash Pad happening in that year. And then the other departments came up with a negative 1.6% decrease, so that we could have an overall increase of 7.7%. So that's just on the levy. Keep in mind, there's the levy. Then the levy equals a Town tax rate. Then the Town tax rate has to add the County tax rate and the School Board tax rate, which is given by the province, and that becomes our blended tax rate. So the ratios are determined by the County of Gray. And you may remember, for the last couple of years, the multi-residential has been slowly going down a quarter of a percent each year. So this year, it's dropping another amount. So that basically affects about $7.53 for every $100,000 assessment on a residential because of the distribution of that ratio going back. The other ratios remain the same as they were previously. So the next table on page 12 shows you what an average assessment is, about $219,900. So they're going to see a $176.21 increase for the Town. This is just the Town portion right now, so about a 7.66%. And of that amount, $16.55 is the result of that change in the ratio. It would have been 159.66, but because of the ratio switch, it's now 176.21. To put it in layman terms, on every $100,000, because nobody is going to be exactly 219, 944, probably easier for everyone to know what $100,000 is. So every $100,000 will go up $80.12, again, a 7.66% increase, of which $7.53 of that total is as a result of that change in the ratio, something that this municipal council has no control over ratios. It's automatically provided to you. Okay? Regarding the education rate, back in November, the province just said, "We're keeping the rates as is," which is good for them, because any time there's growth, which we know there's been a lot of growth, which means the province is going to get all the extra money if they leave the rates the same. It looks good. They come in at 0%, but you get more money because you have more assessment. And then the County passed the rates on April 10th, the last I heard, and we just received that information about a couple of weeks ago. So now we could calculate the blended tax rate. So the blended tax rate is going up from 01602879. There's eight decimal points on this, yes. And you multiply that by whatever your assessment is. It's going up to 01696563. The next chart near the bottom of that page 12 of the package shows you that our amount from the Town is going up 7.66%. amount from the town is going up seven point six six percent. The county is going at three point three six percent, but the education rate, as I've mentioned, is zero percent across the board. So overall, when you combine that all together, you're looking at a five point eight four percent increase or on an average household, about two hundred and six dollars a year, seventeen dollars and seventeen cents a month, or fifty six cents a day. But again, not everybody has that rate, so we've broken it down for you based on every hundred thousand. So it works out to ninety three dollars and sixty eight cents a year blended rate. That's what we're paying to the town, the county, and the education. So it works out to seven dollars and eighty cents a month for every hundred thousand assessment or twenty six cents a day. And you will notice then on page fifteen of your package, we're just showing you how that tax dollars is spread out. So we've we're showing you the residential, multi-res, commercial, and industrial. You will see that the town portion for all residential, we get to keep sixty six point three six percent of everything we collect. Multi-res is at sixty six point nine six. By next year, it'll be identical to residential because that's where they're trying to get the multi-residential to be the residential rate. But you'll notice on the commercial and industrial, we don't receive as much. More of the money goes to the education for that because, again, those rates are determined by the province. So we only receive fifty percent of everything we collect for commercial and fifty five percent of everything we receive for industrial. On page seventeen, it just shows you there that there has been no reassessment. So all the changes are basically on the levy. Again, the residential change is one hundred and seventy six twenty two. For the town portion, twenty nine eighty two for Gray County and nothing for education. And then the last page, sorry, not the last page, the second to last page, on page eighteen, we get to show you graphics there and basically say residential. So if you're a residential or commercial or industrial and you're all assessed at two hundred nineteen thousand, this is how much you would be paying on that property. Residential, you'd be paying three point seven three, three thousand, seven hundred thirty one dollars, of which the town gets to keep sixty six percent. Commercial, you pay almost six thousand, three hundred thirty eight, of which the town keeps three thousand, two hundred eleven. And the industrial would pay eight thousand, one hundred fifty one, of which the town would keep four thousand, five hundred thirty three. So breaking that residential down further of that three thousand, seven hundred thirty one forty eight, the town portion is two thousand, four seventy six. On the next page, page nineteen, it shows you how the municipal taxes of that two thousand, four hundred seventy six dollars and eight cents is allocated. Thirty four percent goes to the police, twenty point five percent goes to the recreation, and the balance of the municipality takes the rest of it, which is about forty five point two percent goes to the other departments. So two departments are taking up fifty four point eight percent of all the money the town brings in. So this report is that recommendation is that the report D C S zero nine two five for the twenty twenty five final blended tax rates be received and that a bylaw confirming the twenty twenty five municipal budget and the applicable tax rates be presented for council's consideration. We're looking at June sixteen to bring that bylaw forward for our final tax levy. And then once that is approved, then we can start billing for the taxes, which usually go out the beginning of August.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Chris. Discussion? Okay. And not no one. All right, nothing online? So I will call the question, all in favor of D C S zero nine twenty five. That is carried. The next report on page twenty one is item eight point three. It's Report C L zero five twenty five. The subject is the Procedure Bylaw Review and Update, and it's from Vicky McDonald, our Manager of Legislative Services and Clerk. Deputy. Okay, Deputy Mayor Dickert and Counselor Sackel. All yours, Vicky.
Thank you, your worship. The Procedure Bylaw for the Town of Hanover has not been updated since twenty sixteen, although there have been amendments over the last few years, with the latest being in twenty twenty as a result of the pandemic. The Municipal Act does require that every municipality adopt a procedure by law for governing the meetings of council and its committees. As a key priority in the town's strategic plan is open and responsible government. It was felt that this was an opportune time, along with the other legislative changes that we're experiencing or have experienced to update the bylaw and do a comprehensive review. So staff have done that review of the bylaw and have revised it to provide greater clarity and to incorporate provisions with consideration of the changes that that we've seen and questions that have come forth during the current term of council. Municipal procedure bylaws are essential for governing the conduct of council and committee meetings. They ensure meetings are conducted in an orderly, transparent, and efficient manner and that they reflect statutory requirements, such as conflict of interest declaration, the requirement for public notice of meetings, and the roles and responsibilities of members of council. As I said, it's important to review the governance and procedure bylaw to ensure that they're up to date, that there aren't any confusing or problematic rules, and that it ensures municipal governance is more efficient and effective. Some of the changes that have been incorporated, there was a summary provided, but I will just go through that quickly. There were definitions that were added for enhanced clarity and that were absent from the previous bylaw that should have been included there. In Section Three, the application and suspension of rules, again, this information was not included in the previous bylaw. And due to questions being raised, it was felt that this should be included and clarified. The Administrative Authority of the Clerk. This has been added in Section Four, and it just provides for improving the effectiveness and efficiency of council meetings so that issues that maybe require additional discussion or if there's an item where there's a delegation that will be quick, we want to make efficient use of everyone's time. This just provides the clerk with the authority to amend the order of the agenda in advance of the meeting. Orientation, emergency, and workshop definitions were added. Again, because we have had meetings of this type, but there wasn't a provision within the current procedure bylaw that reflects how those should take place. This, again, just provides greater clarity and better flexibility in scheduling meetings for their appropriate function or purpose. Under Section five point eight, the addition of a process for cancellation of meetings have been added just to make it clear and provide a quick reference in terms of what that process should entail. Public notice of meetings in Section five point nine. While they were noted individually under council meetings in separate paragraphs, it felt that it would be was better to incorporate them and consolidate them under public notice requirements. Under Section Seven, participation of mayor in debate, again, this is within the Municipal Act best practices, I guess, for the proper process for the mayor participating in debate. Again, this was not included in the previous procedure bylaw and provides greater transparency and accountability in the conduct of meetings. Section eleven, voting on questions. This was updated to provide clear direction on voting and identifying the number of votes required for a majority. Particularly, this will be important with the strong mayor powers and the vetoes for one third and two third of members. Introduction of a consent agenda. A number of other councils and committees of council utilize a consent agenda as an effective tool to make council meetings more efficient or committee meetings more efficient and move more quickly. So items that would be routine or that are just conveying information would be included on the consent agenda, and it would be adopted as in its entirety by council. If there was an issue or an item on that consent agenda that a counselor wished to pull for discussion on, then you could notify the clerk in advance of the meeting, and that could be pulled so that discussion could occur on that item. So this would be, for example, D I A minutes, airport minutes, if there's just a quarterly information report, such as our bylaw fire, which are now going to semi-annually. It would be those items that could be pulled for discussion. The other item that is a change is removing committee of the whole meetings, so there would just be council meetings. This is proposed to improve the speed at which items can be addressed by staff, such as if there was a grant application due and we required a bylaw, it would delay only having committee of the whole. Where we can't pass bylaws, it could potentially delay that application being submitted with the bylaw. So it's just a more effective way of advancing business of the corporation. Unfinished business, Section thirteen point four. It's just a process, introducing a process where items that maybe weren't dealt with before the end of a meeting are brought up in at the next meeting. And reconsideration of a council decision, Section twenty, we've had this occur during this term of council at least once. And there wasn't any clear direction in terms of how that should proceed. So this has been included to provide that clarity in terms of what the process, the appropriate process to follow is. It is anticipated that the updated procedure bylaw will enhance transparency, improve public trust, and provide for more efficient meetings. The adoption of a refreshed procedure bylaw firms council's commitment to accountability and transparency in local governance. It promotes the principles of good governance and ensures council meetings are conducted in a fair, efficient, orderly mana manner, excuse me, which is crucial for effective decision making. So there are no financial implications related to this report. And the link to the strategic plan is open and responsible government. And the recommendation is that the report be received and that it a bylaw be presented at the June sixteenth council meeting to adopt the procedure bylaw, either as presented or amended by council this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Vicky. Lot of work. Okay, let's open for discussion. Deputy Mayor Dickert.
Thank you, worship, and thank you, Vicky, for your work on this. Just a quick question on the advance notice for a to pull an item out of the consent agenda. It just says in advance of the meeting, so like five to four is acceptable, or I I know at county, a lot of times it's just pulled in the meeting. It's someone just says, I'd like this item pulled. I just wondered how much advance notice you're looking at when you say this.
I would think reasonable notice, so by noon on the day of the council meeting would be sufficient, but that's open to amendment as well. It just gives us advance opportunity to have that item ready for discussion.
Go ahead.
The only thing that I would add to that is what we've discussed, Vicky and I, as we've been going through the procedure bylaw update, is with the consent agenda. If we could use tonight's agenda as an example, the reports that Laura has on tonight's agenda would be items under the consent agenda. So therefore, Laura, as a staff member, would put a hold to potentially be at this meeting, but would only attend if those items are pulled and that there would be conversational curve. So again, reasonable notice that we can say to staff, you either need to attend or you don't need to attend.
And let me comment, and I know where you're coming from. If, say, we have the consent agenda, and how it works is there are no questions asked about those reports. It's just approved as is. Library runs their meetings the same way, so does the police. But if we have a consent agenda and you walk into this room going, I just heard something about whatever, say it was the airport. Can we pull it? Yes, we can. We may not have all the answers because staff may not be present. If it's something, you know, we need to ask particularly a question that only staff could answer. But if it was something about the airport, we could say, Counselor Hocking, you are the rep. Can you explain that? And if you want to highlight something in the airport, you're more than welcome to pull that and say, I want that in the open wherever it falls, so that we can highlight that, similar to county.
And if I can just make a follow up comment to Sheri. Part of the reason that we're trying to improve the process is the amount of overtime that staff can incur with attending meetings if there maybe isn't a topic that is up for discussion. And again, just being mindful of everyone's time in attending these, in attending the meetings.
And council committees of council would would still be in the regular meeting agenda. It's committees not of council, plus correspondence or resolutions from other municipalities or so when you approve the agenda, everything that is in those minutes is being approved, whether they're in consent or other, right? Okay, Deputy Mayor Dickert.
No, I I think what I heard is satisfactory, you know, we will have the opportunity, because if you get some last minute information, you may not have chant a chance to, you know, contact the clerk prior to the meeting. So as long as that option's still there, that's that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that that was still available because sometimes we get late breaking news as well. And it's just good to have the option to to speak of it, because as you said, once you approve those minutes, those actions are approved as well. So thank you.
And I find best practice, if we can, the more advanced notice we can give staff, staff, the better is the transparency. Because if you have a question that is unanswered at this meeting, the same people that are listening in the public may not be around for two weeks from now for that answer. And that question will go unanswered, and there could be wrong information out there. So it's nice to have it all done at the same time, but I understand that it may not happen, and like Deputy Mayor Dickert said, at county, it could happen right then and there. And now, all of a sudden, I think the text messages are going saying, you know, we need transportation here for when it comes around so that they have a bit of time to prepare. So any other comments, discussion? So I do have a question. If you look at the agenda for our meetings, being that we will not be having a committee of the whole meeting, we will be having a council meeting twice a month. So our order of business is listed. It starts on page forty five of probably your iPad and page twenty one of the actual procedure bylaw. We will be singing the National Anthem twice a month and the land acknowledgement twice a month. The land acknowledgement we do now. But do you want to sing the National Anthem twice a month or just at the beginning of the month? Twice? Twice? Okay, good. I just thought I'd throw it out there. Counselor Cable, I see your hand is raised.
Thank you, worship. If anyone else has comments, that would be great. I'm just in the parking lot, so I should be up in about two minutes.
Okay, we'll continue on talking. All right, any, let's have some other comments. If there's any housekeeping things in here, Vicky is working on that, if you notice any. So we're trying to.
And through you, your worship, if I can speak to that, there were a few housekeeping items that have been brought to my attention, and they will be corrected in the final version before it comes forward to council. Just one of them was gender neutrality and some typographical or grammatical issues that needed to be corrected will be done.
Okay. Counselor Cable, you have your hand up again? Okay, Counselor. Okay, Counselor Fleet has a comment, so we're good. Go ahead, Counselor Fleet.
Thank you, worship, and thank you, Vicky. I'm just looking at good news and celebrations. Are we going to do that every two weeks or should, yeah, okay?
Well, that allows something that arises in between, right? Like if you miss the first, if we did it the first of the month, if you missed that, at least you catch it on the second. And if you have nothing to report, that's fine too, right? Like you don't have to report. It's, it's specific items that we want to promote. It's not what we're doing, it's what we're doing in the town and what's happening in the town. So. Go ahead, Counselor Cable.
I thank you, worship, and thank you for providing some time there. I'm on five point seven point two. It's page thirty-three of our package. It says in here, talks about electronic means of participating in a meeting are available for means of council, committees of council, et cetera, in five point seven point one. And then in five point seven point two, it says that request to participate in a meeting must be made to the clerk at least two days before the meeting. I'm just wondering if, given that this will apply to committees of council as well, I'm just wondering if that section, if Vicky wants requests from every committee member to come directly to her or whether it should be something like go to the clerk or the committee's staff liaison.
Through your worship, I would be fine with that amendment. There are staff in particular for Parks, Rec. and Culture that do set up their own electronic meetings. So including that direction in this section is agreeable with me as well.
So clarify that again? Like to me, is in the terms of reference, is that not included? Like if you have a committee, say Parks and Recs, Parks, Recs and Culture, sorry, PRC. Is that in the terms of reference that if you are going to participate electronically, you would contact your committee rather than the clerk? Like I don't want to see a duplication here that. Go ahead.
Through your worship, I don't believe that is specific in the terms of reference for committees. That's more their objective and, and goals. Mostly the conduct of meetings falls under our procedure bylaw that the committees follow the same process as council does.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Cable?
Thank you, worship. Five point seven point three says that a member may participate in a maximum of two electronic council committee or meetings per calendar year or at the discretion of the chair. And certainly, given the fact that I would participate in about twenty of them at least in a year, I would ask that that be removed or that the maximum be increased.
So Counselor Cable, I just want to say you're special. And you're covering both. Like you're not doing the entire meeting electronically. And at the discretion, like we understand that you have your job. So I don't see, I, to me, that a maximum of two electronic council meetings is to deter people from going south for six months. Right? We want you here in person and you are here in person.
I guess certainly, given the way that I read this and I think about, for example, the planning advisory committee, given that this is also applying to committees of council, I suppose it would also apply to those committees and members who, who do typically go south for the winter.
This is a carryover from our current procedure bylaw and our electronic meeting policy. And it came about as a result of the pandemic. So in terms of flexibility for attendance, I think that is still at the discretion of the chair for planning advisory. They meet mainly electronically and they've adopted that process. It is, it was meant as a measure initially to, to prevent members of committees and council when they're otherwise able to attend in person, that they not choose to attend all their meetings electronically.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. In section five point three, which is on page thirty-one of our package, outlines that all regular meetings of council shall be held in the council chambers on the first and third Monday of each month at four PM. And certainly I would ask for consideration of a five PM start time. Certainly, living through the four PM start, I do worry that it will impact those who are seeking a council seat in the next term. And certainly I've also found that this council term, it is much harder to review answers to questions that come in on Mondays compared to when our council meetings were at seven PM. So I would, I would make an amendment for that, for that time.
So if you're going to move that amendment, is there a secondary? That the start time be five? Counselor Hudson, open for discussion on the amendment only, at which is changing from a four PM start time to a five PM. Counselor Fleet?
Thank you, worship. You know, this is a hard situation to come up with a perfect time for everyone the way the work world is. Like myself, being retired, you know, I might prefer an earlier time where, and I understand where Counselor Cable's coming from. Yeah, it's, it's to find that right time that works for everyone. You know, everybody works shift work. I, yeah, it's just to find that perfect time.
Counselor Hocking?
If I'm, if I'm correct, and sometimes I'm not, but I, I think the idea of moving it to four was, first of all, recognition for staff to finish the day earlier. And secondly, by doing that, we cut, and this has already been raised, the cost of time and a half as, as a budgetary concern. I, I did a little survey about six months ago and the majority of councils in Gray, they start at noon hour and, and it becomes a, you know, an order of business with, with all staff there, so it's a normal working day for staff. So I understand Counselor Cable's dilemma. But I think I'm leaning to stay at, at, at four. He does a great job on, on, on the Zoom and he's got that down to a fine art. So his, his contribution is still well received. And I like, I like, for, for staff consideration, I'd like to keep it at four o'clock.
Okay, Counselor Hudson and Counselor Sackel.
Thank you, worship. I'm just thinking of, because we all now are thinking about succession planning with the next coming up after us. And I know that we didn't have a lot of people throwing their hat in the ring at the last election. And just wondering if perhaps we have guidelines that are a little too stringent to enable people that are still in the working world to be able to participate in some of these things. And I understand also that the, the staff is a consideration. I, I believe your workday is down at four thirty, or is it four? Four thirty? So really at the end of your workday, it's a half an hour lunch break or whatever. And we have something in here that the meetings don't go past nine o'clock or a four hour meeting. So I would like to see it delayed a little bit to give the opportunity to those that may be thinking for next term to decide to, to run, that there would be an opportunity that everybody doesn't have to be retired on council in order to make a difference.
So meetings can go past for, or nine o'clock if this, if we're in the middle of a discussion and we want to have a vote eventually, as long as council approves that. I did a, a while ago, I did a quick survey of other councils. Most of them start at nine, nine thirty, ten o'clock. Couples start at one o'clock. West Gray is at nine. There are two others that start, one at five, I think they're both at five. So every other municipality has daytime meetings, just for information. Counselor Sackel?
Thank you, worship, and thanks for that information. I would like to keep it for four as it stands for two reasons. Number one, I agree, the staff, I hate to see them working longer hours than they have to. And if we're looking at the twenty twenty-six election and trying to get young people, younger people in, think about their families, their partners, their dinner hour. I think that's important too. So for that reason, I would like to keep it at four and hopefully be done by a reasonable time to get home and put their kids to bed at night, that kind of thing. Thank you.
Anything further? Any further comments? Deputy Mayor Dickert, we're still on the amendment. Okay.
Yes, I, I, I I see both sides of it. Like as Counselor Fleet had said, it's really, it's virtually impossible to find the time. It's going to be perfect for everybody. But I do see the five o'clock as maybe being a compromise. You know, it kind of ties into the end of the workday for staff that do need to stay for the meeting. And we just talked about changing to a consent agenda and hopefully eliminating a few more commitments on the part of staff. So perhaps the five o'clock is a, is a good balance. Like I said, it's a compromise between the staying at four and, and the old seven o'clock that we used to have was, was certainly a much more inconvenient thing for staff. So I would, I would be supportive of five o'clock.
Counselor Cable?
Thank you, worship. I think the only other thing I would add is, you know, if this is not approved, I, I do hope that council will give consideration to those who are on council in the next term. Certainly, when the four o'clock meeting was pitched, I was told that the time is flexible based on the needs of those who are on council and the time can be adjusted. So I do hope that going forward, if a whole slate of, of young people wish to run and are elected, I hope that there will be a flexibility in moving that to whatever time suits, suits those who are on council.
So just as an FYI, that decision would have to be made by this council before the election candidate packages go out so that anyone putting their name forward would know what time council starts. So it will be this council if we're going to change that start time. We can't, all of a sudden, at the beginning of the term, turn around and say, oh, well, we're all retired or we're not all retired. Like we need to have that package ready for people that are considering running. Okay, I'm going to call the question on the amendment and that is to change the start time of council meetings from four o'clock to five o'clock. All in favor? One, two, three. Those opposed? One, two, three, four. That amendment is defeated. So now we're back to the main motion and that is to receive the procedure bylaw as presented with some of the housekeeping changes that have been recommended. And I will call the question. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Opposed? One, two. That motion is carried. Thank you. All right, item nine is correspondence requiring action. Nine point one. Just before we do this, I just want to ask Vicky, is this an item that would be in the consent agenda? The elder abuse?
It is an item requesting action, so a motion from council. So it would be in the regular agenda.
Okay, good to know. Thanks. We'll get used to it. All right, this is correspondence from Gray Bruce Elder Abuse Prevention. And World Elder Abuse Awareness Day is Sunday, June the fifteenth. And the Gray Bruce Elder Abuse Prevention Network is a group of organizations and individuals committed to preventing elder abuse through providing public education and awareness about this issue. They are asking everyone in Gray and Bruce counties to help them take a step toward eliminating, to help take a step toward eliminating elder abuse by remembering the importance of respecting older adults on June the fifteenth. They're asking the town of Hanover to draw attention to elder abuse by issuing the attached proclamation and flying the flag for part of June this year. Okay, so I'm just going to read the last part of the proclamation. And it is saying, "I, Sue Patterson, Mayor of the Town of Hanover in the province of Ontario, do hereby proclaim June the fifteenth as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day and encourage all residents of the town of Hanover to recognize and celebrate seniors and their ongoing contributions to the success and vitality of our municipality. My suggestion is that we raise the flag June the thirteenth to the twentieth, which would be a week and the flag would be up during the day, which is June the fifteenth." Open for suggestions, recommendations, or we need a mover and secondary and we can do that. Counselor Hocking and Deputy Mayor Dickert? Any other suggestions, comments, discussion? All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Item ten point one, or ten is reports and correspondence for information. Ten point one is report PRC zero five twenty-five. The subject is the volunteer fair and it's from Laura Kristen, our Director of Parks, Recreation and Culture. Laura?
Thank you, worship. Good evening, council. Some local organizations, they are continuing to express challenges in recruiting and retaining volunteers. And sometimes that these are actually impacting their operations and it's impacting their ability to actually be able to deliver their service and programs. So this, this is not a unique issue with our community. It reflects a broader trend where that demand for volunteers is rising while the supply of willing and available individuals is declining. So in response to this need, the Parks, Recreation and Culture Advisory Committee suggested the idea of a volunteer fair. This is a proactive step towards building that awareness and connecting residents with meaning, meaningful ways to contribute their time and opportunities and encouraging that engagement. So the, around the same time, it was actually the Hanover Public Library was also looking into and exploring a volunteer fair. And so the decision to collaborate, and we, we've now partnered with the library as a joint venture presented by the town of Hanover as well as the Hanover Public Library. So this volunteer fair, the primary goal is to bring a diverse range of organizations together under one roof, making it easier for residents to explore the opportunities and connect directly with the groups that need their support. This event, save the date, please, will take place on June the seventeenth from four to seven PM on the arena floor at the P and H Center. To date, we actually, this is outdated. We had thirty, it's now thirty-four vendors that have confirmed their participation, representing a wider range of nonprofits, service clubs, cultural groups and public serving organizations. Participating organizations will be set up kind of as a trade show style format on the arena floor. They allow them to present their missions and highlight their current volunteer opportunities and hopefully engage with residents that are interested in getting involved. To encourage community participation and to boost attendance at the show, the first one hundred attendees will receive a free slice of Domino's pizza as well as a swim pass to the Hanover Regional Aquatic Center. This event has been promoted with local schools as well. It's been shared directly with numerous organizations. The town will be participating in the volunteer fair. We'll be promoting various volunteer opportunities such as, such as town committee recruitment, trails, eyes and ears, youth day camp, outdoor rink, there's many opportunities and more. There is still space available for any other vendors who are looking to join. Interested, interested groups can contact Brandon Dobson, our program supervisor, for more information. Admission is free to attend the volunteer fair and there is no fee for organizations to participate. Admission is free to attend the volunteer fair and there is no fee for organizations to participate. The objective is to make this event as accessible as possible and removing any cost to participate can eliminate that type of barrier. Staff time for this event will be covered within the existing PRC and library budgets. The hundred swim passes will be funded through the PRC budget. The free pizza for our attendees has been generously sponsored by Domino's Pizza in Hanover and the Cultural Roundtable is supporting the event with a dedicated advertising campaign to further promote community, community participation and that will be on 101.71. The link to strategic plan is Goal Two, Healthy and Welcoming Community. And the recommendation before you this evening is that report PRC 05-25 Volunteer Fair be received for council's information.
Thank you. Any comments, suggestions? We're good to go. Good work. Oh. Go ahead, please.
Sorry. Thank you, your worship. Sorry, Laura, how many spaces do you have left, just in case?
We could have double, so there's lots of opportunity because we're on the arena floor at this point. Our floor plan really only takes up about half, so we've got lots of capacity.
Okay, 10.2 is report PRC 062025. The subject is Canada Day this year and it's from Laura Kristin, our Director of Parks, Recreation and Culture. Laura?
Thanks again, your worship. The Canada Day celebration in Hanover has been a longstanding tradition since 1992. But this year's event is going to be relocated to Town Park and it promises to be an exciting one with a wide range of activities for the whole family. So this year's Canada Day will be relocated from Heritage Square to Town Park where it originated back in 1992. Thank you, Sherry, for that, that nugget of information. Is it, and the reason for this is it's going to be combined with the grand opening of the new Canadian Tire Splash Pad. The relocation for this year's event was a natural fit. Given the project's completion timeline, the strong family focus of both the Canada Day activities and the Splash Pad opening, so the similarity between these two events, it provided a unique opportunity to, to merge them together. It's, if you can say, the perfect marriage, does that exist? Yeah, we'll see. The event will begin with the official grand opening of the Canadian Tire Splash Pad. It will include a ribbon counting ceremony. We will recognize our generous donors, thank our dedicated volunteers whose contributions have played a vital role in the planning and the development of this new asset for our community. The ceremony will mark the completion of the project and then will lead into more of that traditional Canada Day celebrations. There's going to be a variety of family-friendly activities, including inflatables, children's games, balloon twisting, temporary tattoos. The Rotary Club will host their traditional barbecue. There's going to be a funnel cake food truck on site with delicious items for purchase. The entertainment lineup includes performances throughout the day, beginning with the Gray Bruce Singers performing Oh Canada. A children's entertainer called Rumpel and Friends will engage the younger audiences and followed by popular, popular local artists that will provide a mix of live music for attendees to enjoy. We have added additional, we will be adding additional parking spaces temporarily, of course, on the grass areas to improve accessibility for attendees. And we are, we will have parking attendants on site to assist parking during the event. In addition to the Canada Day celebrations, the town's going to be bustling. There's a variety of community events throughout the day. A Canada Day breakfast will be held at the Curling Club from eight AM to 11 AM. The cost is fifteen for adults and eight for children under 12. Youth Unlimited YFC Hanover is also going to be participating. They have opening their doors at the Dec Youth Centre for, from 11 AM till 2:30 PM and that will include festive Canada Day cookie decorating for youth as well. The total budget for the Canada Day activities is $7,980. This is funded by a $3,020 grant from Heritage Canada and approved within the 2025 PRC budget as well. The Match Eatery is sponsoring, they're a longtime sponsor, as are our temporary tattoos and facility and camp staff coverage is within the existing PRC budget. The link to strategic plan is again Goal Two, Healthy and Welving Community and the recommendation that report PRC 062025 Canada Day 2025 be received for council's information.
Thanks, Laura. Sounds like a great day. My only question is, will there be signs here at Heritage Square? Just in case people don't listen to the radio or see the posters or whatever. And maybe at a couple of entrances. Okay. Other comments, questions? Okay, very good. So we're on to 10.4. No, 10.3, sorry, skipped one. The Town of Hanover Volunteer Appreciation Day. Are you doing that one, Sherry? Sure.
Thank you, your worship. So volunteers are the theme in June for the Town of Hanover with the volunteer fair on the 17th and then this event on June 28th. And we have provided invitations to all of our not-for-profit groups, working on getting some invitations to our faith-based organizations this week with this flyer and we're inviting any of our volunteers to wear their gear or their apparel and fill the square with their t-shirts and hats and whatever apparel on Saturday, June 28th for Volunteer Appreciation Day when mayor and council will look forward to sharing popcorn and cheer with our awesome community volunteers. So there's going to be the music in the square. It's part of Music in the Square featuring Assorted Affair and then I also understand the DIA will be offering some volunteer specials. So again, that's on Saturday, June 28th from 11 to 1 in Heritage Square and we look forward to seeing a great crowd for council to interact with and thank our volunteers who help make our community tick, so to speak.
Good, thank you. Councillor Sackel.
Thank you, your worship. Sherry, are we able to provide you with a not-for-profit group if you don't perhaps have it on your radar already?
Yes, yes, that's more than fine. We've used our community contact list that is on our website and usually in the Parks, Recreation and Culture Guide, so those are the groups we've, it's been, it's a fairly extensive list, but yes, if we've missed somebody or have another group, that would be just fine.
Okay, 10.4 Committee of Adjustment Meeting Minutes. Councillor Hudson, please.
Thank you, your worship. Committee of Adjustment met on Thursday, May the 15th by virtual meeting. Two minor variance applications have been completed and construction has commenced. We had three consent applications, one was for 267th Street and that was regarding a severance of a lot to create six new street townhouse units. The property was rezoned in 2024 from R1 to R4 to permit this form of development. To allow the project to move forward, the proponent must relocate the sanitary sewer line further into the lot with the town of Hanover assuming ownership of the new infrastructure. The application was reviewed by the Planning Advisory Committee and the committee had no concerns, Gray County planning staff had no concerns either. And so the consent application was granted. The second consent application, a minor variance for 730 18th Street and the committee was informed about a proposed accessory structure at the back of the house. The applicant is proposing to enclose an existing rear deck, which is currently considered an accessory structure. And then once enclosed, the structure becomes part of the primary building, which requires a rear yard setback. The applicant is also requesting reduced setback to accommodate the enclosure as well as they are proposing to build a new unenclosed deck in the rear yard as well. The application again was reviewed by Planning Advisory, no, and no concerns there and so the application was granted for that as well. The third one is for property on 154 16th Ave, again, minor variance. And they're requesting the variance to the maximum gross building area to allow the construction of an accessory building. This applicant is also seeking a reduction in side yard, rear, rear yard corner setbacks. They currently have a shed and swimming pool at the rear of the property and those are both classified as accessory structures and the zoning bylaw allows for a maximum building area of 600 square feet for all, so this exceeds that. And so the application, again, reviewed by Planning Advisory, no concerns and it was granted as well.
Thank you. And I don't see any hands raised. So we'll move on to 10.5, which is the Hanover Police Service Board Meeting Minutes from May the 20th. The board is working on the strategic plan, their strategic plan and annual report. And once it is approved by the board itself, it will be presented to this council. All police board policies, current and new draft policies will be reviewed by a working group to ensure that they are compliant with the Community Safety and Policing Act. A regulation of the act requires that every police service provide an annual crisis intervention training for officers and the Hanover Service has partnered with West Gray and Saugin Shores with both their services to deliver training in November and December of this year. Chief Noel received notification by email from Premier Ford that he would be awarded the King Charles III Coronation Medal. This medal recognizes individuals who have made a significant contribution to a particular province, territory, region or community in Canada. Chief Noel was very pleased to be recognized by, through the premier's office and the Governor General of Canada. The chief reported on Project Noisemaker. It's been launched and it is to target loud vehicles and particularly loud mufflers. The media release that he issued caught the interest of CKNX polling question of the day. And the poll showed close to 70% of those who responded were in favor of such police action. And he did say several drivers have already been stopped for unnecessary noise under the Highway Traffic Act and the campaign continues throughout the summer months. So we can expect to receive a report at the end of that campaign, campaign. So the board also had a good discussion about traffic cameras, which includes speed cameras and red light cameras. So benefits include increased safety. These cameras are effective, effective in reducing speed and making roads safer. Public education is important before implementation as the public often sees cameras as a tax grab rather than a safety initiative. So there would also be a benefit to effective use of police resources as calls for service are prioritized by importance during the day and speeding seems to be not at the top of the list. So the board is in favor of this initiative being explored and as a result, there was a motion during those minutes, including in those minutes, recommending that town, town staff explore this initiative, which this would be managed by the town and not by the police service. So is there any discussion or comments about that? What, I did ask Vicky to prepare a resolution in case we agreed to do this. What would be involved is probably Sherry would be exploring this to see whether there are benefits and what's involved. We're on Gray County roads right now, whether we can even do it on Gray County roads when they're not Hanover roads. And if there are, what's involved? If there's a, like, the cost comes, is the company that does this, they receive the money, we receive a percentage, as far as I know so far. But it's something the board thought would be good to be explored. Councillor Cable.
I think your, your worship, and certainly this was an item that I caught my attention when reviewing the minutes. I believe it was at the Roma Conference that there was, one of the providers of the service had presented. And certainly it is something interesting to look at and they're talking about the number of tickets that, that they process in, in a day. Given that Gray County typically, it's my understanding that Gray County typically receives payment for, for any fines that are issued by the police service, is that, is that correct? So is this outside of that arrangement? Okay.
Yes. Did you want to comment, Sherry?
I, I'm trying to think which present, it must have been at the OMAA last fall. There was a, an organization, well, a city who's become one of the providers. And yes, my understanding is that though that revenue comes directly to the municipality versus the county, but that's some research we'd have to look into further, but, so it's outside county.
Any other comments or questions? Councillor Hudson.
Thank you, your worship. Under who, who would be looking after this part of, like, which staff category would be looking after this then if we were to take this on?
So you can finish, Sherry. My understanding is the company would be looking after that. The, what I'm referring to not being police, if someone receives a ticket in the mail, they're going to go to the police station. No, they would have to come here if they're disputing it or, or it's through the company, right? Sherry?
Again, I'm, I, I think we'd have to do some more research to know exactly what those parameters are. So from a research perspective, it'll fall through myself and working with Chief Noel accordingly to get answers to those types of questions. As for the administration and the ongoing admin, the ongoing work associated with the program, if there is direct work, we'd have to determine which, which staff department was most appropriate for that, if it in fact includes that.
Think that would all be answered in this report. So, Councillor Hawking?
Thank you, your worship. One, one of the things that the chief mentioned that, that's not recorded in the minutes, it's very, very difficult for officers to, to get the right vehicle and when they're going through intersections, he said the camera is far better and plus it's better use of our, our police officers who are busy during the day. This is when the majority of the incidents, so he said it's very, very effective and and of course, it's, it's for safety. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? All we're doing is investigating, exploring and then we could make a decision then. Okay, so I, thanks, Vicky, for preparing this. That the request of the Hanover Police Service Board counsel direct town staff slash CAO with assistance from the Hanover Police Service to investigate the feasibility of traffic enforcement cameras, including speed cameras and red light cameras and provide a report to council for consideration. So if you're in agreement, I need a mover and seconder. Do you have a question? Councillor Cable?
I think your worship, I'm just wondering what your thoughts are around timing. Certainly there would be a fee to purchase these cameras, so wondering if this would come back in time for 2026 budget.
I'm thinking it'll be late fall before we get a report, being that we're coming into summer and what's happening, but Sherry?
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, it definitely is going to be late fall. I'm going to say no, it will not be before 2026 budget deliberations because that's probably September, October-ish. It'll be more for a 2027 budget.
Okay. So did I have a mover and seconder? No, I didn't. A mover? Councillor Hawking, Councillor Fleet, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Okay, so next on the list is 10.6 on the agenda, sorry, Saugin Mobility and Regional Transit, Transit Mobility Minutes. Deputy Mayor Dicker.
Thank you, your worship. Our meeting was on April 25th and at that time, the board reviewed correspondence from Gray County and directed the manager to work with Gray and Bruce Future Services Model Team to investigate the integration of transit services within Gray and Bruce Counties. The goal is to amalgamate all transit The goal is to amalgamate all transit into one service to increase efficiency and service levels. We continue to work on an agreement that would seek concordant, receive enhanced levels of service for their clients. With that municipality covering all the additional costs to, to do that. Smart has received a request for service for a student residing in Saugin First Nations area. And as a result of that request, the board has directed the manager to contact Saugin First Nations to see if there is interest on their part in offering that service in their area. Saugin Mobility will be taking advantage of a grant that will cover most of the costs to hire a summer student to assist with general administrative tasks, tasks, including and updating records and supporting the financial reporting. And the operations report showed that we had total rides in March of two thousand one hundred and seventeen, with Hanover having four hundred and three of those rides. I would be pleased to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you. I don't see any hands raised, so we'll move on to ten point seven. This is the Saugin Municipal Airport Commission Meeting Minutes. Counselor Hawking.
Thank you, your worship. Memorandum of Understanding states there that Brockton did not endorse the Memorandum of Understanding, like the municipality of West Gray or ourselves. They will sign it once they is negotiated a new costing agreement. And I'll make mention of that at a later in the agenda. Our Barnes to Beaches music tour is taking place on July the twenty-sixth. We meet every two weeks for our organization and it's starting to come together. Thanks to all the three municipalities who provided new flags for the airport. Funding agreement. Ms. Hamilton from the municipality Brockton sent us a, a notice that we, we being the three appointees could come up with a new funding agreement. We did not think it was proper for us. And then we recommended that and send it back to Ms. Hamilton. And I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of it, at the Saugin Municipal Airport and the, and that the group consists of the mayors, the chief administrative officer, and the three municipalities, and the three municipal-appointed representatives on the commission. We sent that to Ms. Hamilton and we, and we copied West Gray and the Town of Hanover. It's currently in Brockton's court right now. Just for your information, this is, this agreement has not been updated since two thousand and twelve. And it's supposed to be amended every five years, so it's long overdue. But we're going to wait for Brockton to drive the process, whether they accept our recommendation of the working group. But I don't think it's efficient for all three councils to get together to decide the funding agreement. And is the funding agreement only the percentage that we pay, or is it the entire agreement? So wait and see. Airport Commission, Airport Manager's Report is attached, and he has hired a young female student from, from the Aviation Management Georgian College. Her name is Iga Sirnak, and she is also taking part in helping us with the July twenty-sixth event. Let's see, we had a closed session, and there's some highlights from Tim's report. And then you will see our new logo as a part of the minutes, and we have just going to erect a new sign that's seventy-seven inches by eighty-eight inches, so seven feet by, no, six feet by over seven feet on County Road Four that we could never get approval for, but somehow we got through the maze and we're, we're erecting that this, this week, I think. So it's pretty cool, isn't it?
Any comments or questions for Counselor Hawking? Very good. Thank you. Ten point eight is the Gray County Council and Committee of the Whole Highlights. Deputy Mayor Dickert.
Thank you, your worship. On May twenty-second, council, the council meeting included the introduction and welcoming of Niall Lobley as the deputy C A O. In honor of National Public Works Week, council recognized Gray County Transportation Services staff for their important role they play in maintaining roadways and keeping them safe. Also recognized Paramedic Services Week and thanked Gray County paramedics for their commitment to community care. And council acknowledged Warden Matrasov's appointment to the Board of Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Cities Initiatives. In the Committee of the Whole Meeting, we reviewed the Budget Committee Meeting Minutes, which include details on the ten-year capital forecast for transportation services and approval of the hiring of M N P as our auditors. Council appointed five members to the newly formed Joint Municipal Services Committee. The purpose of that committee is to look at services that can be shared among two or more municipalities across Gray County, and I am one of the members of that committee. We received a summary on Bill Five, which was named Protect Ontario by Unleashing Our Economy Act. It's a newly proposed bill from the province which aims to protect Ontario's critical minerals and energy sector. Staff have highlighted areas of concern and some areas of support for that bill. Staff also provided a summary of Bill Seventeen, the Protect Ontario by Building Faster and Smarter Act. And staff shared some of their concerns with that bill, which would impact municipalities, and the bill is proposing changes that would affect several current acts, including the Development Charges Act, Building Code Act, Planning Act, and more. Staff, county staff will be submitting comments to the provincial government on that. Council made a decision to option back some unused lands from the Bright Shores Healthcare Center at the Markdale Hospital and to negotiate a sale of a portion of those lands to Gray Highlands for a project that they are considering. And in the wrap-up the meeting, we made suggestions for the delegations at the upcoming AMO conference in August. Those are my highlights.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments? Okay, very good. Item eleven is planning and other meetings. They are listed on this agenda and on our website. Dates to remember and announcements. Our next regular council meeting is Monday, June the sixteenth at four P M. And at this time, I'll ask if there's any notices of motion. Counselor Hawking.
Thank you, your worship.
Microphone?
Can't do two things at once. Thank you, your worship. I, I have a motion that I would like to bring to my colleagues tonight. And in, in order to do that, to waive the two weeks required for notice of motion. I, I need your support that I can bring this motion to your, tonight for consideration. It deals with June is being recognized as Canada as Pride Month, and I'd like to bring this for council's consideration. I do have a motion, but I don't, do I have to get the two-thirds before I begin?
Yes. So if we're going to move forward with this, we need to dispense with the notice of motion timing. Otherwise, it would be two weeks from now. Pride Month is now, it is the month of June. So if I could have a mover and seconder, Counselor Cable and Counselor Sackel to dispense with the notice of motion procedure. All in favor? That is carried. Okay, we got that covered, Counselor Hawking, so now you can
Okay.
Present your motion.
I have a few whereas statements, so I'll be patient. And whereas the Ontario Human Rights Act prohibits all forms of discrimination, including those on the grounds of sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, and general expression. And whereas Pride Month raises awareness and provides support and advocacy for the two S L G B T Q plus community, and is an opportunity to build understanding, acceptance, and equality. And just for everybody's information, the acronym two S L G B T Q plus is an umbrella term that represents diverse sexual and gender identities. It stands for two-spirit, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and the plus sign signifies the inclusion of additional identities within those communities. And whereas the Pride Month is at integral in fostering belonging, increasing public awareness of the two S L G B T Q plus community and their contributions. And whereas the Town of Hanover Strategic Plan identifies a healthy and welcoming committee as a priority. Therefore, be it resolved that the Council of Hanover declare June two thousand and twenty-five as Pride Month in the Town of Hanover, and that the pride flag be flown at the civic center during the month of June two, two thousand and twenty-five, with the exception of June the thirteenth to the twentieth that we already approved at a previous motion. I'd like to make that motion.
Is there a seconder? Counselor Cable, discussion? Counselor Cable, then Counselor Sackel.
I think your worship, and thank you, Counselor Hawking, for bringing the motion forward. Certainly, I think, you know, with Hanover, you know, prides itself on being a progressive and welcoming community, and certainly I think, you know, raising the pride flag is something that it's a visual symbol that we can do to show that Hanover is an inclusive place to be. Certainly from my perspective, I, I do think it's a little ridiculous that we have to do this every year in order to raise the pride flag. I think that it's, it's something at this point in time, we've done for so many years, that I really would encourage council to consider whether we need Counselor Hawking or Ed King or whoever it is to bring back this motion every year, or whether it's something that we can standardize and accept into our policies, that it's, it's the norm going forward.
I'm forgetting to turn my mic off. Sherry, any comment to that, or?
Well, we do have, there is our proclamation and flag policy, which I'd have to look at what it says. I, I think based on my understanding of our proclamation and our flag raising, it is something that does require an annual request at this point in time. So I would suggest we stick with that and, and stick with our policy accordingly. But I was just going to see if I can source it here quickly, so if there's another question, I'll try and find that policy quickly.
Counselor Sackel?
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, I like that idea as well, but I'm wondering, can we not put two flags up at the same time? Can we not have the elder abuse and the pride flag flying at the same time?
I'm going to say no, that it would be most appropriate if we raised the pride flag tomorrow and had it up until June thirteenth. It comes down, World Elder Abuse goes up for the week. It comes down and the pride flag goes up, and that way we've covered the month, we're accommodating both.
So you're telling me we can never have two flags on the pole at the same time?
I don't believe that's flag protocol. That's some, Sherry, that's something we can look into, whether we can continue having the pride flag automatically raised. My hope is someday we don't need to do this. That it is just normal, welcoming, inclusive to anyone and everyone, so. But, okay, go ahead.
So with respect to Counselor Cable's request or note that it just be standard, so flags for proclamations currently are policy reads that oh, sorry, I scrolled too far. Upon request, council may consider placement of a specific flag in accordance with the proclamation section of this policy. The, the flag, obviously we know that it's, it's added to the municipal flagpole, which is located at, it's closest to the clock tower. It's the designated flagpole used to fly proclamation flags at the discretion of council. And proclamation flags shall be flown under the municipal flag and for the duration of the approved proclamation. And currently, all organizations and or persons submitting a request for proclamation shall do so in writing to the clerk at least four weeks in advance. Approval shall be on a first-come, first-served basis on the date the requests were received. I encourage that we probably should follow this, because otherwise, things like what we just, we, we just approved the world edler abuse as well. Should that not be part of standard process as well? So then it becomes, do we just continually have these flags as standard protocol? So I think having it as a request process or a notice of motion through council is the, the most appropriate way to do so.
Go ahead, Counselor Cable.
Thank you, your worship. Yes, I think, I think my questions stem from, we do fly the Every Child Matters flag in September, and I think that's part of a a council-approved policy that, that we approved a few years ago, and I, I do wonder if that's something for us to, to explore as we move forward.
Okay, I don't see any of the comments or questions. We can think about that and see where we want to go. Sherry, I'll leave that in your capable hands. All right, so we do have that motion, and, sorry, I didn't write down, it was moved by Counselor Hawking, seconded by Counselor Cable. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. We do not have a closed meeting. We have one final motion. Counselor Cable, before we have our final motion?
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to provide council notice that I do plan to bring forward a motion at our next council meeting related to updating the proclamation and flag raising policy.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Hawking?
You mentioned that we would, you had mentioned that we'd do a photo op tomorrow? I'm just in, because we're going to put the flag up, so if there's anybody around wants there, we always invite Chief Noel?
Yes, and I believe Chief Noel is away at a conference, so we will ask the deputy chief. And if two fifteen works, if you can be here, if you can't, that's okay, but I would like to see it up tomorrow, since we just passed it, and it is the beginning of the month. Okay, we do not have a closed meeting, and we have one final motion to conclude the meeting, and that is adjournment at five forty-seven. Moved by Counselor Hawking, seconded by Counselor Fleet. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you.